Call the Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council meeting to water for Tuesday, May 2, 2017 at 7:15 PM. We'll start first with salute to the flag.
Where is the flag?
I got the flag.
Let's look at the computer then.
I bet you leave this to the wall.
Yeah, let's leave it to the computer.
Okay, we can use the computer.
We're not going for a wall.
You've got a laptop.
Stand over there.
I hope this isn't being telepathic.
There you go.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Arman.
Here.
Councilor Candelora.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Council Miller.
Here.
And Council Rose.
Here.
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, April 18, 2017, Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Any corrections?
Yes, I have three of them on page 13, under Capital Improvement Plan, under the discussion part, when they're talking about the cost of the boiler. The estimate should be $135,000, not 135, even though we wish it could be that. Page 15, the first motion on the page, it was to approve, it would be the second payment of the four-year lease for 2017-18. And on page 17, the motion, the vote for the motion, it should read "for five," because it was "for, for it, and five against it," instead of "five, four," and the motion failed. So those are the corrections. On page 17, it's the first vote at the top of the page.
Mike, good, Mayor, I had two other corrections on page, if Councilor Angeloni's done. I had 16, there's a slash after, in the second paragraph, there are empty storefronts that need to be occupied, there's just a typo there, a little slash, and the next sentence is, "A grant writer may be able," shouldn't say "to help," it's just a T without the O. And also, the minutes on the front page, first page, said Wednesday instead of Tuesday, April 18.
Rose, did you say the motion on page, was it 16?
On page 17.
Oh, 17, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Any other changes? Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Council Miller.
Yes.
Council Rose.
Yes.
Moving to the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. First item is Correspondence, Citizen Statements, none listed. Unfinished business, nothing listed. New business, nothing listed. Citizen Statements and Petitions Under Water Pollution Control Authority. Seeing none, we'll move into the regular Town Council Agenda. Reports of Boards and Committees, Boards and Commissions. First item is Permanent Project Building Committee.
There's no meeting, there's no committee right now, because there's no projects.
Next item is Economic Development Commission.
Economic Development met last night. They reviewed a new North Branford Farm brochure showcasing the local farms in the area. They reviewed local grants that are available to farmers, i.e. viability grants. They discussed wording for the Grant Writing ECD Coordinator position. And they discussed the list of available properties that were vacant and available for development. And they also, you know, I wanted to go over briefly what Rex has done for North Branford this past year. They provided a paid intern to develop and execute a business retention survey. They did comprehensive economic development strategy updates to the North Branford Economic Development Commission. They participated in North Branford Economic Development Commission UI presentation. And the list goes on, and I'll provide that to all council members this week. And then give us some time.
Thank you. Next is Park and Recreation Commission.
Well, Councilor Angeloni's going to give that report, because I was pulled out of it to be one of the judges in the Pizza Wars, which I'm glad to say went very, very well. Huge turnout for it. And I had my fill of pizza.
So, Park and Rec Commission did meet last Tuesday, and as Councilor Miller said, he drew the short straw and became the judge, and graciously let me stay at the Park and Rec Commission meeting. But we were all invited to the Pizza Wars after the Commission meeting to get the scraps that were left. It was a great turnout, there were a lot of people there, and it was a very good event. But at the Park and Rec Commission meeting, there are several items on our agenda tonight that I'm not going to go into at this time, because they're later on the agenda. One of the biggest things is the Park and Recreation Capital Transfer that they're requesting, and it's funds that they already have, and it's to fix the basketball court up at Northford Park. That's what it relates to that. The court at Stanley T. Williams, and also the tennis court, so we'll get into that more later. They also talked about the resignation of the Park and Rec Secretary, which is on our agenda later on. They talked about the dog park. There is a soft opening scheduled for this week, on May 5, I believe it is.
Saturday, I think.
6. And then they're going to plan a regular opening later on. I believe North Branford Unleashed is supposed to be meeting tonight, to see once the head of that organization, Eric Hodgson, is moving out of town, and so they need to get an organ, see who's going to head that up, because that's really the contact, that is the contact for the town, as far as the upkeep on the dog park and things going on with the dog park. So that is an important piece, as far as Park and Rec Commission was concerned in regards to that. Fields are in great condition, you know, baseball is off to a great start, they have, Little League had their opening on the 22nd, so things are going along fine on the rest of the issues. And Lauren, is, I don't see, is Alex here tonight for the agenda item?
No. No.
Okay. Because one of the discussions also is Alex DeFrancesco, who is head of the Connecticut Brewers Association, I believe. They are interested in having a beer garden at the Poco Fest this year. They were talking about it for like a one-day event, having it on the softball field, but they have to come before the council, because it's the whole thing with the liquor permit and everything, and so I basically told them, if they didn't have enough information, they didn't have enough time, we might not be able to pull it off for this year's festival, but they can get all the information, and we can just continue going forward, and maybe it's something that we can do for next year. So.
Is Park and Rec's disposition on that idea?
They were fine with it. It's, you know, one of the reasons they chose the spot of the softball field there is because it's contained, it's fenced, and, you know, it's one way in, one way out, so they would be able to control the people, you know, checking IDs, the whole wristband, you know, I don't know all the logistics to it, because that's what Alex was going to present to the council, as far as what they were thinking of. But that would be the spot for it. And it's, yes, it's just, it's a beer tasting, you cannot buy alcohol, or you can't, you can't buy the beer, you can't take it off-premise or anything like that, but it would be a tasting from the local breweries, is my understanding. You'd pay a certain fee to get in, but he would present, he will present all that information to the council.
Thank you. Police Commission?
The Police Commission will meet Monday, the 8th of May.
Fire Commission will meet next Thursday. This Thursday. Board of Education, Town Council, Communications Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Public Safety Communications Committee?
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission?
Planning and Zoning will next meet this Thursday, on the 4th. On the agenda is continuing discussions on a moratorium on marijuana dispensaries.
Next is the Town Manager Report. Request from Household Hazards Central to review contract for July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020.
Yeah, I just wanted to put this on your radar, as an FYI, just to have you look at it. What I'd like to do is prepare this for next meeting in May, the meeting on the 16th, and it's just something we do on an annual basis for Hazewaste, and I just wanted to give you a heads-up. If there's anything you see in there that is of concern, certainly feel free to give a call.
Thank you. Next is LED Street Lighting Program.
Yeah, that's also additional information for you, and I know it's come up before. We actually have residents who had talked to us about that, and I think there's more research we want to do. I personally think that, my recommendation would be that we do more research to look at the difference between the 3,000 and the 4,000, I guess, wattage, or lumens, or whatever.
Lumens.
Lumens, yeah. I think there's some stuff that we want to take a look at, and make sure that we're not, I guess, pushing any other health issues, so it sounds like from these communications that UI is saying that they're not going to be ready with a 3,000 until later. I don't think it hurts us to wait until those 3,000s come out to market, and that would be my recommendation, that we slow the process down. I just wanted you to be aware of that, that we're researching this and looking, and taking in the concerns of the residents, and I think rightfully so, there may be some health issues related to that. If I can add just one thing to that, again, UI, the choices, the 4,000K lights, or 3,000 up this year, or 3,000K next year, the 3,000 number.
It's a softer light. There are, there's some literature that indicates there may be some health issues with it, that may affect some people negatively.
With the, not with the 3,000.
The 3,000 is.
The 3,000K is deemed to be healthier than the higher.
Than the 4,000, or higher ones. Yeah, so, just in agreement with what Mike said, they put it off one year, they're ready to go with the 3,000K next year. That seems to work, and it seems to address some of those concerns that have come up recently. The other one, sort of FYI, Wallingford Electric, they're going with 5K, a 5,000K bulb replacement at this point. They purchased them, they're only going, at this point, replacing, if something burns out, they're replacing the bulbs, at this point. They're going to ramp up in the next few years to start, they say within five years, they hope to have all things, all the light fixtures changed to LEDs. We've asked them to look at some of the lower, to the 3,000 or 4,000Ks. They haven't done it yet, they're, we're trying to get them to look at that. They're a little different utility than the UI. They purchased a bunch, and that was a decision they made, but we've asked them to look at that in the future, for when they lamp out the rest of them, to try to maybe do the 3,000, 4,000K. And what they've, Wallingford Electric said, within five years, it should be a 25% reduction in the rates of the streetlights, based upon using the LEDs. That was the ballpark number they gave us. So there is a savings to be realized from it.
Thank you. Next is a memo from Kerry Dugas, Town Planner, regarding petition of P&amp;Z Commission for a zoning regulation amendment on a moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries, producers and retail distribution.
Yeah, and again, this is just an informational item, to bring to your attention that the Planning and Zoning Commission is looking at this, and there will be a public hearing date coming up for this spring.
And finally, the dog park.
Yeah, I think Councilor Angeloni covered that. It's a soft opening for Saturday, this stuff is, the benches and things are coming in, and again, it's all about the group coming together to make sure that they're going to be having oversight and helping us with the management of that facility, and I think they're looking at, trying to get a dedication sometime in, end of May, or May 27th or June 3rd, so I'll certainly bring that information as it becomes available.
Okay, we'll move on to Community Events and Presentations. Charles Larkins, regarding flags for Women's Club.
Yeah, I think you remember, that was a very successful ceremony last year, and Mr. Larkin has just indicated with a, with a letter to inform you that they'd like to do that again.
That was a terrific ceremony last year. Councilor Angeloni and I were each in attendance, and there were a lot of people, and it was a very meaningful event for a lot of people, and I certainly look forward to attending again this year.
Want to make a motion to allow Mr. Larkins to?
I would make that motion, to allow the North Branford and Northford Women's Clubs to set the date for Flag Day, June 14, and have that on the grounds of Town Hall.
Actually, it looks like they're proposing to do it through July 4.
Well, the actual ceremony.
That's the, the actual ceremony.
Then don't they display the flags?
A grain.
On the lawn, yeah.
Yep, that's up through July 4.
Up to July 4.
Is the displaying, right?
Okay, motion second, any discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Council Arman.
Yes.
Council Candelora.
Yeah.
Council Diamond.
Yes.
Council Manna.
Yes.
Council Miller.
Yes.
Council Rose.
Yes.
Next item, Citizen Statements, Petitions and Correspondence.
Hi.
How you doing?
Donna Persley, Marjorie Drive, and you know, I'm here about the streetlights. But since the Town Manager, and you guys feel that, and Kurt was saying that he, they applaud UI for having a 3,000K option, that's very good, and I'm glad that you guys are, have researched that and are on board. And I think the reason why they're trying to up our schedule to the 4,000, I don't know if any of you get the paper, but there's been editorials, the town of Hamden was next on the schedule to get the 4,000K lights, and the people in Hamden are fighting it. So what is happening is that they're probably looking at whatever town was next on the list, and that probably is us. So they're trying to take those 4,000K lights and put them to us, because Hamden doesn't want them. So I think that's probably why they want to up the schedule. But the, and, you know, I've saw the, what you have in your packets, and 4,000K lights was the industry norm in the past, but since they've made improvements over the years, the 3,000K lights are what is becoming the norm. Northeast Utilities, which is the largest utility in the state, has gone to 3,000. And if UI has now said that they're going to go to 3,000, so now the only utility companies that are going to do cooler light is Wallingford Electric. I think there's an electric company in Norwich, and maybe Bantam, there's some other smaller electric companies out there, that I don't know what they're doing, but Wallingford Electric says they're going to do 5,000. We've talked to them, we've tried to convince them, I've sent them materials to try to say that that's very unhealthy, and they don't seem to want to listen. So what's happening, what's happening now is UI, if we wait, which I, you know, I think we really should wait, because as long as you wait, the more efficient these fixtures are going to be, and maybe instead of saving 25%, maybe we might save 30% on our electric costs, if we wait a little while, because they're still making great strides in this technology. And the people who have UI will have nice, cool, more healthy 3,000 lights, and the poor people who live in Norfolk are going to have these really bright lights from Wallingford Electric. So hopefully, we can at least talk to them, and maybe if the town talks to them, instead of a person, a resident who's not in that territory, you might have more weight. And just to describe some of the terminology, lumens is brightness. So, you know, when you have a dimmable light, you know, how bright it is in your eyes, that's, the lumens is the brightness of a light. The kelvins, which is what we're talking about, the 3,000, 4,000, that's the actual color of the light. You notice, like, this light is yellower than that light. So those lights have a higher number, maybe that's a 4,000, maybe this is a 2,000, something like that.
But we don't want Wallingford Electric, you know, just going ahead and putting it up in Northford.
They're doing it now.
Blue, are they?
When a light burns out, they're replacing, they said that they're replacing it with a 5K.
So then you have a smattering of blue light amongst.
Yeah, I don't know where it is, but they say when a light burns out, that's what they're doing now.
2,000 is what we have now.
Watts, okay, and watts is the amount of energy that the fixture uses, and it's totally different depending on what type of fixture it is. If you have an incandescent bulb, or a sodium light, or a LED light, watts is all over the board. So watts is not a good term to use describing light anymore. You know, like, a 60-watt light bulb is incandescent, where if you have an LED replacement, it's like seven and a half watts. So watts is not a good term to use in describing lighting anymore. It's more the kelvin, which is the color temperature, and the lumens, which is how bright it is. And also in the handout, there's a bug rating, B U G. It's backlight, uplight, and glare, is what, how they rate these, the fixtures now. And backlight is how much light is coming from the light going back into the sidewalk or the residence yard.
Behind the bulb.
Behind the bulb. Uplight is how much is going up, which with full cut-off fixtures should always be zero. And the glare is how much, when you're driving, you can actually see the actual bulb, and how much glare it causes the driver. And our human eyes, when we see a bluer light, it scatters in our, in our eyeballs. That's just the way it works, and it makes it harder for us to see. You know, when you see a brand-new car that has those bright blue headlights, you have to look away, you can't look at it. And the fog lights that we used to have on the cars, those were all orange, because orange cuts through the fog, the blue doesn't cut through the fog. So I know we're going to have more discussion on this in the future, but I just thought I'd give you some of the terminology, and I'm really glad that people in town are researching this.
Thanks for the update. Next item is Resignations and Appointments. Seeing none, move into unfinished business, discussion in action, approval of proposed ordinance 2017, 2017-1, Chapter 40, entitled Fire Department.
Yes, that is not ready yet. I would suggest the council table that for the next meeting.
Motion to table that to our next.
Move to table that to the next meeting.
Second. Discussion, roll call?
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Council Angeloni.
Yes.
Council Arman.
Yes.
Council Candelora.
Yes.
Council Diamond.
Yes.
Council Manna.
Yes.
Council Miller.
Yes.
Your next item is Review of Draft Proposal for Architectural Services, North Branford Police Department, renovation and expansion.
Yeah, so there is a draft, and I hope that you've had time to take a look at that. I know we had discussed it at length, and in terms of going around, whether there's anything that you think is missing, or you want to add to it, modify in any way, or edit, and.
Yeah, and just to go over briefly, in terms of the concept, it's request for qualifications and proposals. There's requirements for qualifications, and to make sure the selected firm has, can do the work, has the experience doing the work that we're asking them to do. And the request for proposals on the initial phase of the work, which is basically, you know, we have a budget of 1.5 million to $2 million, and to evaluate the listing of, you know, potential items that we've, have been identified in the DTC report, and sort of pared down by the subcommittee, and then working with committees and staff to come up with what's the best way to spend the money, and then present a final report, and preliminary conceptual plans of what's proposed to do within that funding limitation. It also spells out here that if we go forward with it, then we can negotiate a final fee for actual architectural plans, if we go out to bid on the project. They couldn't give a price on that at this point in time, because it's unknown exactly what that final scope is going to be. That has to be identified in the initial phase, based upon the listing of identified items. So they can't really give a price on the final phase at this point. So it's written up that we can negotiate a scope with them and a fee, once we get through the first phase. So that's how it's structured. If you want to make changes, we can make changes, but that's a concept.
Good, thank you.
Does the council feel they need more time with that, or review, or should we let that fly?
Looks good to me.
Yeah, I think it looks good.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we let it fly.
That's a highly technical term.
Is that the language you want to put in that motion?
Nobody seconded it, though.
I'll second it. The bird.
Dan, Council Arman.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Council Angeloni.
Yes.
Council Arman.
Yes.
Council Candelora.
Yes.
Council Diamond.
Yes.
Council Manna.
Yes.
Council Miller.
Yes.
Council Rose.
Yes.
Next item is Review of Fiscal Year, 17-18 Budget Items, Ambulance Fund.
Good evening. These were two items that were addressed during the 17-18 budget preparation, and I was requested to give a little detail on the background. The first being on the ambulance subsidy. Again, I want to make sure that it's clear that that in no way impacts the operation of the ambulance service. This is merely the general fund subsidy to the ambulance fund. And as was requested last year, there was a reduction in the amount that was needed. And so when the discussion came up as the amount needed to fund the EDC position, if the council so chose, it kind of made sense to put the $25,000 up there as a way to satisfy that. Again, the fund, as you see on the second page, has been in a negative position for the past six years, and will continue to be in a negative position. The orders do not comment about it, so it was kind of seen as an easy way to solve that other problem. The second item is the Superintendent Position in Public Works, and kind of unbeknownst to all of us, we forgot about that, it was approved in the 16-17 budget for a half a year at a $35,000 salary. When the budget was created this year in 17-18, it was put in again for $70,000 as the initial amount. When the budget was created this year in seventeen eighteen, it was put in again for seventy thousand dollars as the initial amount. And again, that was removed at the manager's level, again, because we had all forgotten that it was approved for a half a year of salary. Uh, I also included in, in your, in your sheets, the current, um, the Public Works Department budget, uh, that shows the, uh, current year's budget, where it did have the seventy-five thousand added in, uh, on the full-time line from a million thirteen thousand nine hundred to a million forty-eight, which is thirty-five thousand for the half a year. And there was an adjustment on the one-twenty line, uh, for eight thousand dollars roughly of pension, social security. So again, you guys did put it in for half a year this year, and, uh, we all just lost track of it. On the last page I put in your packet is the current appropriation level of the Public Works Department. And you'll see while it appears there's three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars left there, uh, that is not taken into account payroll. And when you factor the payroll in, there's very little left. Uh, so bottom line is, we're gonna use that money, uh, to probably come before you for a transfer subsequently for other items. Repairs have been high, uh, Mr. Marola can, uh, discuss, as recently as this week, uh, one of his major trucks went down and looking at a significant, uh, repair. Also there's, as we've mentioned in the past couple of years, a significant amount of tree work needs to be done, which is rather costly. So that money, while it was intended for a half-year superintendent, will probably be used for other, other expenses at the Public Works Department.
So I have a question, Anthony, on the, on the subsidies for the ambulance.
Yes, sir.
And I know I should know the answer to this, but I don't.
Okay.
So, and, um, on, on your little chart from two thousand eleven to two thousand eighteen.
Yes, sir.
So it shows, you know, the fund balance in the negative.
Yes.
And it's pretty much always in the negative.
Correct.
So what do we do with that negative money?
It shows on, on the, on the, on the audit as a negative fund balance.
Okay, so who's not getting paid?
Nobody. They're all getting paid.
So, alright, so, so why, so, so like, I mean, in, so in two thousand eighteen, we're gonna be down eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Correct.
So I know it's accounting method, but.
Correct.
Accounting has some kind of a means, so.
Basically, the way, the way the subsidy is generated is the fire commission looks at what's the budget for the year, what's the anticipated revenue for the year, and what the net number is the subsidy. So in order to make the fund whole theoretically on any given year, expenses minus the revenue from the billing, that's the amount of subsidy that they need to bring it to zero. If you look back in the two thousand fifteen year, the fire commission actually requested three hundred thousand dollars. It would've brought it to a, a zero at that point. The council gave him two hundred thousand dollars. So there's been a kind of a history of short funding that, that subsidy. And again, without really much consequence, because it does not impact the ambulance operation. Where the money comes from theoretically, the general fund is kinda loaning the ambulance fund money, you know, if you wanna look at it on paper. But the ambulance fund, all the bills are being paid, all the expenses are being met.
So this money that we take out of the general fund, so.
Yes.
We've taken, you know, up to two hundred thousand, um, hundred and seventy-five thousand, and then for two thousand eighteen, hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Correct.
So that's money coming out of the general fund.
Correct.
So when you show us in the budget, money that we took out of the general fund to balance the budget, is this included in that? Like, let's say we took.
Yes.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand?
No, that's, that's separate, that's fund balance.
Fund balance.
This, this is, there's a line in your, in your, um, Budget Department forty-two twenty-five, and it shows ambulance subsidy. That's where that hundred and twenty-five shows this year. So.
Okay, so.
That's a different issue.
So that's the general.
General fund subsidy to help out the ambulance fund. As opposed to the general funds, fund balance to balance its own budget.
Okay, so our negative numbers. If we don't owe anybody, why don't we just wipe 'em out?
Because again, the accounting of it is that they've paid, they've theoretically paid in more, they've paid out more than they've taken in. So it's a negative fund balance, a negative cash. So again, how, how does that work realistically?
Right, how does that work?
Again, the, the, the general fund or the other funds are basically.
Cover that.
Cover that in the meantime.
So like, our minus eighty-seven thousand, or minus whatever year we are, we're in.
Right, we're gonna be eighty-seven next year.
Okay, so we're minus forty-three thousand.
Correct. Estimated this year is.
We're not gonna cover that with the general fund?
No.
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 We carry that to next year?
Yep. We've carried a negative balance since, since you see on this paper.
Right, I see, uh, well, one year we, like, we were, we were even in the beginning.
Right. That's before the paramedic service kicked into place. When it was a BLS-level service, it basically was self-sustaining, or a lower amount of, of, of a subsidy. Um, so the, the higher subsidy has kicked in with the interventions of the ALS kicking in place. Which is still, you look at it for a bottom line.
So then basically for the EDC grant writer position, we took money out of the general fund.
Right.
We didn't take it out of the ambulance fund.
Exactly.
We took it out of the general fund.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly right. I mean, it would've ended up in the ambulance fund, but it's just basically one pocket to the other, it doesn't make a difference in the bottom line.
What would've happened to the ambulance if in fact we provided a zero subsidy?
Uh, nothing. Would've been a, a greater, a greater hole in that fund, which would've been covered by more money from the general fund and other, other funds, loaning it the money theoretically, if you will, to pay the bills. It's not, it's not, it's not good accounting. You wanna show, you wanna get on the, on the path.
Bizarre accounting.
You wanna get on the path, we have, we have, we have, um, Losip Fund is typically in, in the red, because it's a, it's a, you pay upfront and then get reimbursed subsequently. Uh, we have capital project funds with the state waiting for roof money to come back on T V S, negative positions, because the money's been spent.
So our subsidy then is just an arbitrary determination of just how bad we want the ambulance fund to appear.
I, I guess you could say, I mean, there, there's some logic behind it. When the, when the fire commission creates the budget, it looks at what the expected revenues are versus expected, expected expenditures, and says this is the hole for this year, this is the shortfall. So if the town plugged that amount in, then if you, if you can look these, these amounts all along, if the town plugged in the amount that the fire commissioner requested, it'd be in a positive position or, or breaking even. So.
Bizarre.
Are these shortfalls, are they all people who don't pay for the ride?
Uh, that's a function of it, sure. A, as, as the chief can attest to, uh, there are a significant amount of people, you know, uh, on the accounts receivable of the ambulance. And yet, sure, if, if that was paid a hundred percent, no bad debts, it, it'd be a totally different financial picture. But that's just not reality in, in the ambulance world.
So remember how the fire department was looking at billing insurance companies?
Correct.
Can you bill the, is there a line in insurance, in your homeowners to cover an ambulance ride as well?
We do, don't we?
No.
Do we bill the?
The ambulance, no, not through homeowners, through medical insurance.
Yes, medical insurance.
Right.
That's how we get reimbursed for those rides, and they have insurance.
Correct, or people pay in, in, you know, individually if they don't have insurance.
Right.
But if they, if they don't have insurance and they get billed.
Right.
We don't go after them if they don't pay it, correct?
Um.
That's probably not a discussion we really wanna have.
Yeah, no, we, we, we are, we don't, I, I would say that's not a hundred percent true statement, no.
Okay.
Cause if that was the case, then everybody'd say, I have insurance, and then we'd be eating a lot of money. So there, there are collection efforts, there's a collection agency that, the, the billing company that we use has a collection agency that is like X amount of days after the bill goes out, gets sent to the collection agency. The chief gets a monthly report to review and say, okay, uh, Rose had a bill on this day, she paid X amount of dollars, this is her balance. We send her to the agency, yes or no? And the chief looks at it and.
Makes a determination.
Makes a determination, and we, you know, obviously if it's, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. There are, there are collection procedures. But to answer your point, you're a hundred percent right. If, if everybody paid at a greater percentage, there'd be less of a negative position. You're a hundred percent right.
As far as the public works figure, you have forty-three thousand dollars here that was in the budget.
Yes.
But yet the motion that was made last year was for fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-five. When we did the budget.
Yeah.
That's, that's the motion that, and that's the dollar amount that went into, cause I have the motion here.
It might've been.
So what's the difference?
That's a good question. I don't know, what, what was the, did it say, was it, was it benefits?
It says that.
Might've been half-year of medical, too.
It says it includes salary, medical benefits, life insurance, pension, and long-term disability for fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Cause it, and you, the pension, the, um, medical benefits and life insurance would be in, in the other department.
That's, that's what kicked it up.
What do you mean it would be in it?
Forty-seven thirty-four department employee benefits.
Oh, so it's in.
Wouldn't be in Public Works Department.
Okay.
So if we wanted to, at the end of this year, and Public Works didn't need that, we could move that money.
Correct.
We could move it into the general fund to put it towards a position for Franny, you know, later?
No, no, it's, it's, it's a general fund appropriation in the current.
How would we move that forward to go to, go to that position again?
Well, you didn't fund it for next year.
Right.
So basically, you'd be hiring the guy for a month, and then potentially laying him off July first.
No, 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 not for now. At the end of this year, we're gonna have to move that money somewhere.
Correct.
So how could we earmark that for, I mean, it was paid for two years ago now. So how could we earmark that money to stay for that position? Then we gotta have a position paid whatever year we put it in.
Yeah.
We would've had to appropriate it.
Yeah, you can't.
Budget.
Yeah, general fund.
From what they said before, the odds are Franny's gonna have another use for it between now and the end of the fiscal year.
Right. Frank could speak to, against some of the significant repairs he has coming up, so in all likelihood. It, it'd be quite honestly, uh, a feat if he breaks even this year, including that money. Based on some of the significant repairs he has coming up. And I'd, do you wanna speak to that now, or? Not really.
Repairs in general.
Repairs in general, he's got a, a truck, his back-all truckload, seven thousand.
Well, we got, we, we got one, we, we got two trucks now with new transmissions. So one's a ten thousand, eight dollar repair, the other one is seven, seventy-eight, I just got a quote the other day for, about eight thousand for that. We had an engine go down at one, that was seven thousand. Roadside mower got repaired, that was over eight. That's all just stuff that happened just this year alone, besides all the other repairs, all the, probably the major stuff. And then the power wise, uh, you know, we didn't do too bad this year, but that's always ongoing repairs. But those are the major ones, the roller. So then you figure we'll be moving that money into your equipment repair, um, fund? Probably, yeah, yeah, I'm sure. But I haven't done it, I haven't done two of the repairs yet. I haven't done, the, the two trucks are sitting, one's up at Detroit Diesel now. I'm trying to get another quote on the transmission, but I got, that's the, the big back truck, so I got, I gotta get that going.
Hey, but it.
Pardon the question, what are we gonna do?
Better get those, um, purchase orders in for July first.
Yeah, well, we're holding, just, I mean, we, I haven't really, we talked to Anthony yesterday about it, oh, we have to, we have to do something. And these are all, I mean, again, they're older trucks, it's nineteen ninety-five, the one that just went up the other day, the other one was a ninety, uh, six or seven, ninety-six. And one is, I don't know that it's worth repairing, the other one we should repair. Cause of, uh, it's a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck, probably five hundred thousand today, so we ain't getting one of those right away. So we gotta spend, I, I think we need to spend the money on it.
Okay, thank you. Next item is new business, discussion in action. We have to amend the agenda to add two items on there. F, Lisa Valenti Town Clerk, changes to the ballot language. And G, Ken Delfini requested appointment of new marshal. The present marshal we have now is retiring. So a motion for F, Lisa Valenti Town Clerk, changes to the ballot language.
Some of.
Is her request.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan.
Yes.
Council Angeloni.
Yes.
Council Arman.
Yes.
Council Candelora.
Yeah.
Council Diamond.
Yes.
Council Manna.
Yes.
Council Miller.
Yes.
Council Rose.
Yes.
Next is G, Ken Delfini, appointment of new marshal.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan.
Yes.
Council Angeloni.
Yes.
Council Arman.
Yes.
Council Candelora.
Yes.
Council Delfini.
Yes.
Council Manna.
Yes.
Council Miller.
Yes.
Council Rose.
Yes.
Okay, next item is request to lift hire and freeze for secretary in the Park and Recreation Department.
Yes, I, I put the letter of resignation of Jonathan Brouillard in, in your packet and requesting, uh, a lifting of the freeze so that we can replace, um, that position, secretary, uh, for Park and Rec. Uh, Lauren is, uh, actually faced with, uh, uh, as you know, by now, uh, a complicating factor that, uh, the Potato and Corn Festival Coordinator has also resigned. Uh, it'd be pretty difficult for her to, uh, undertake both, uh, operations and, uh, talk to her at length, with trying to keep their head above water, and, uh, certainly would go a long way to getting, uh, replacement for secretary.
We have a suggested motion.
The North Branford Town Council hereby lifts a hiring freeze to allow, uh, the Park and Recreation Department to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Mr. Jonathan Brouillard, Secretary.
Second.
Some discussion.
Discussion.
Was that position, wasn't that one that they had operated on, operated without for quite a time, and then they added that? Or did that, did that guy replace some of?
I believe you might be thinking of the part-time one in the morning from eight-thirty to.
Oh, okay.
This is the regular secretary, uh, for the department, which is a full-time.
Full-time.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan.
Yes.
Council Angeloni.
Yes.
Council Arman.
Yes.
Council Candelora.
Yes.
Council Diamond.
Yes.
Council Manna.
Yes.
Council Miller.
Yes.
Council Rose.
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you. I just wanna say that, you know, I, I hope that we can find someone of Jonathan's caliber, uh, to, to replace. I think, I don't wanna speak for Lauren, but, uh, every, everything I heard was, uh, that, that was a great fit, uh, in that, in that organization, that department.
He was, I have to say, out of all the years I've been there, from all three buildings, he's probably one of the best. Could be the last.
Thank you.
Enjoy the weather.
Next is a draft RFP number four, Commercial Real Estate Broker Service for fifteen ninety-nine Foxen Road.
Right, we had talked about, um, putting this together, I don't know if you have any, any, any comments, um, on that. The, obviously, the, the work is done at fifteen ninety-nine, uh, all cleaned up. I think the, uh, job went well without any, uh, incident, uh, or any problems in that. It went very smoothly, and, uh, so now I, I guess this is the, the next step, that we're looking at, uh, broker services. And it may be a little bit, uh, maybe a little overkill, with a lot of boilerplate in here, a lot to get through. But in essence, uh, looking at, uh, uh, broker services. And we did create the, uh, list, um, of the previous developers and interested business, uh, entities that we've been in contact with, and, uh, also added, uh, another one to the list. Um, and that was the, uh, Arts Alliance.
Is there a motion for this?
Uh, no, I didn't, I'm sorry, I did not prepare a motion, because I'm not sure if you're, you're entirely satisfied with the language or if you wanted to do any more tweaking, uh, with that.
I think it's up to the council. I mean, we had a lot of residents that wanted to keep it as a park. We had some residents that wanted to, um, sell it. So I, I think the council has a decision as to what they wanna do with that piece of property. Either keep it as a park or, or s- put it on the, um.
So personally, I would leave it open. Um, yeah, you can't get, you can't get new land, and, uh, I think that, that could be, um, you know, it could be a nice park of some sort. But I also realize that, you know, we don't really know the value of it, so I don't know whether you. Yeah, I don't know whether we, you know, list it, see what the offers are. And then decide based on that, or.
I think that's exactly what we should do, Al. If we're not getting any money for it, yeah, we leave it a park.
Right.
If it, it's a, if it's a real amount of money, it's something that will pay continual tax revenue. Then we have to decide, but we won't know until we know what it's worth.
Right. Then there would be two, you know, there's really two phases to that. If, you know, so, so a, a, a commercial real estate is gonna come in and they're gonna tell us what they would list it for. You know, um, and, uh, and then the second phase would be if somebody actually wanted to buy it for that. And those are normally two slightly different, yeah, numbers.
Isn't there also still the option of being a multi-use piece of property? Part of it could, could be.
All the options are on the table, we have to see what proposals come in. And those are our options. Either to do nothing, or to evaluate the proposals that come in and assess them for what they are. And that would be my recommendation.
I think it's a little bit unrealistic to, um, and possibly even unfair to expect.
I think it's a little bit unrealistic to, um, and possibly even unfair to expect a broker to actually take a listing on a property, expend time and energy, money advertising, showing the property if in fact there is any reluctance to sell it. So while I think it'd be nice to be able to make a decision because we have an offer of X dollars versus maintaining the property's open space, I don't think that's a, a good business practice with whatever brokers we talk to. I don't think it's the appropriate approach to the potential developers that might come in and expend time and money examining and studying this property to make an offer on it. And I think there's also the remote possibility that we list a property for a specific sum of money, we get an offer that equals or exceeds that sum of money. Unusual, but possible. And I think under those circumstances, if we decide not to sell, we still owe that broker their fee. So while it might be nice to have all the cards on the table and be able to make that decision, my inclination is I think we have to make a decision whether or not we're going to preserve this property or sell it. And I think that should be done before we engage people's time, effort, and expenses to look at doing this for us.
Yeah, basically, I spoke to people that, that said it would be nice to move some of the monuments from the church property slash town property over there over to these park, make it a veterans memorial type park, um, and, you know.
So, so what if we did this, what if we, we'd have to pay a little money, but what if we put out an RFP for a, you know, a, a commercial real estate appraisal of the property, so we're actually paying for that appraisal? And then you still don't know whether anyone's gonna offer that money.
The appra- the appraisal price is one thing. What it, what it's going to translate as for development is entirely different. I mean, if, if we're talking about just selling the property as a, a commercial site, that's, that's, that's a dollar figure. What gets, what gets developed there is entirely different, and that gets mixed up in this conversation. You know, the more I drive by it coming west on Route eighty, the more attractive the land is. As I, as I look at it, it looks more and more like a park every day, and there are people in it on, on a fairly regular basis already using the property.
Well, here's the other thing, and I hate, I hate to even say this, but, you know, the state told us we had to take that baseball field out and they paid us to move it. That doesn't mean that you couldn't put another baseball field there one foot further away or a little different configuration.
That's perfectly reasonable, Al.
I'm dead serious. You know, they, they said you had to take out all fields. And you know what the reality is, we didn't have to. It didn't even touch the outfield fence, and, uh, you know, the field was so low that, you know, no Little Leaguers were gonna hit a ball up there, but.
Well, what's done is done, though, I mean, we're.
I totally agree, but there was no caveat put on the property that said it couldn't be something. So, you know, it's in the center of town, like I said, I mean, I don't, I, I'm willing to try and figure out what it's worth.
Like, like people said to me, you know, instead of putting people in danger when we have our celebration at the Congregational Church for the Memorial Day Parade, it'd be safer to move them off the street and have it in that little park or X park or whatever you want to call it, the baseball field, and, and the people are off the road. And that was one of the, that was one of the residents' concerns.
I mean, maybe could, could Dave do an analysis of what, what, you know, with the current zoning, what, what the taxes might bring in? If it was developed, I don't know.
And what we can sell it for. I don't think we need an agent to appraise it, do we? We have the talent here.
They'll cost you around five thousand dollars for commercial racing.
Okay, I mean, the numbers that we're looking at.
How about if we use your expertise?
Labs evaluate the property, usually gets highest of the issues.
Okay, that makes sense.
Like I said, we have the talent. Why is why send money?
Well, according to the information that's in the packet, here, back in October twenty ninth of two thousand fourteen, it's
Eight fifty.
Eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, the value of.
That's, that's land cost only, that doesn't, that's not a projection of what it would bring for taxes if it was improved.
No, no, right, no, this is just the value.
No, right. Right, the value of the land.
Correct.
And that was done with two buildings on.
Right.
Two buildings that had to be removed.
Right, right, exactly, well, now I'm saying it's a clean site.
And, and remediate, yeah, right.
It's remediated.
So it's clean.
Yeah, it's a clean site. I'd like to see what offers we get.
But why would we solicit offers if we're not going to, if we're not interested in selling it?
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah, we have got, we gotta come to this.
That'd be, that'd be in such bad faith.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a debate.
I agree with what Joe said in regards to it.
I agree too. I mean, we gotta figure out whether we want to park and what those expenses and costs and liabilities are, or we want to develop it and what those costs and benefits are, you know? And I kind of thought we had some of those figures, but.
Don't forget, you sell it. You don't have any, you don't have any open space down there.
Well, you sell it outright, you lose control.
Yeah.
But we're not obligated to just sell it outright. We're obligated, you know, we can, we have our options. You know, we do. So what would you like the next step to be? Should we, should we?
Well, we'll wait for, um.
See what Dave says.
Yeah, our successor.
Dave will come back with a fi- his figure, and in the meantime, we can, um, get together some sort of packet that, you know, includes the liabilities, um, tax revenue potential, what, you're right, Mike, I mean, we, we have all that.
Yeah, I guess you, you, maybe we'll do is, is allow Dave to work on it, bring it back for the meeting on the sixteenth, but look at what option, op- there's two options, right? Option is to keep it as open space park.
There's more than two options.
Yeah.
A, sell it outright, and let it be what it's going to be. B, maintain it for either passive or active recreation as a town park. And C, sell it with some sort of a land disposition agreement that controls what can or what should be developed on that property and restrict its development to that use.
Even with revenue, there are things we would not want there.
Okay.
Yes. Dave, is the sixteenth enough time for you?
Uh, no, not a problem. But I want to mention that any restrictions on the property will have an adverse effect on the value of the property.
I understand.
So any number you come up with is our best possible scenario?
Well, he's gonna look at the highest and best use.
We understand that.
So it's probably going to be a commercial strip mall development.
Right, I'll figure out what size building we can put in the property, figure out what the growth principle income would be, and capitalize that value.
Yeah, but we're not talking about.
No, it's, it's, he's talking god awful ugly.
All right, moving on, next is Park and Recreation Capital Transfer. Lauren, you want to address that?
Um, the first one that you had gotten was, there's two reasons I thought here. The first one was with an option of just doing the basketball in, um, the basketball in post tension and the tennis in asphalt up at Northford. Or the other option was doing all of Northford similar to Memorial with post tension basketball and tennis. Um, I had given you those numbers, we would be in a great deficit. There is a third revised, you don't have in front of you tonight, Kurt gave me some new numbers yesterday. I was under the assumption when I had gotten the quotes for STW courts that, um, from the two companies that, and speaking with Fran, we thought the fence was gonna be resolved, we could keep this fence that it's there, we can't keep the fence that's there anymore. They had met with somebody yesterday, correct? And we got a number of about thirty thousand to put a new fence around that as well. So STW is now gonna look at about ninety nine thousand to do just.
Does that move that negative to, from fifty four to eighty four?
Eighty three, eighty three, yep, five nine. Um, and so, and then the other reason, uh, train of thought was just doing the basketball in post tension, keeping the tennis in asphalt. But after speaking with Kurt, there's two, my commission, and I think some of us are on different trains of thoughts. One train is keep everything in Northford, do it all, correct the first time, do post tension, make it, do a complete project versus doing post tension, um, now, and the basketball, and not doing anything with tennis, which was, which was one of the discussions that came with the revised edition after my commission meeting. Because they're not quite sure that the tennis gets used as often up there as they think it might, and that my commission would really like to see the building, um, courts in front of our building get done just because of they've been closed for over five, six, seven years, I don't know the exact number, as well as we have camp and things up there. So they were looking at the overall numbers thinking, let's do the courts in front of us and repair the basketball, because you just get the, um, pictures of what the courts, Northford basketball courts are in bad shape. So there's two trains of thought, we can either do the complete project up at Memorial, have it all on the same maintenance schedule, have it all done together, we'd probably get a better cost saying they do the complete project.
Pardon? You say Memorial, you put North.
Um, North, what I mean, we'd probably get a better cost doing the whole project versus piecemealing it, and then in two or three years, doing another piece. And then again, it's not gonna be on the same maintenance schedule, it's not gonna be on, um, the same, maybe not even the same colors, cost us more. So I'm not sure which way the council would like to look at this, we could either do Northford as one complete project and do STW, or we can do Northford half of the project and do STW.
I think it's gotta be the latter, we don't have eighty five, eighty four thousand dollars there.
Well, and, and STW, the courts, they wouldn't be tennis courts.
No, correct, they'd be one tennis lined with pickleball, and the other three courts would be a multi-purpose.
Right.
For basketball, rent out for roller hockey, do leagues on it, um, as well as camp, do dodgeball, basketball, those kind of things.
The, the Park and Rec program, and this was a big discussion at their last meeting, their summer camp program is really a, a major revenue for, for Park and Rec. And currently, they really don't have space to do things with the kids, with those tennis courts being closed. So what they're looking at doing, and I, and I agree with their thought process on it, is to get the courts in a, a spot so that they have space for those kids to play, because now you also have the, you know, you can't bring them all inside because you also have the senior center inside, and you have limited space, so you, you can't bring the kids from their program on inclement weather days inside, also, there's just not enough room to accommodate all of the, all of the people. And so this would give them an avenue so that they could run programs out there and have a place for them to play, whether it's basketball, foursquare, um, that type of thing, organized space, and also to rent out for, um, it's, it's actually, it's kind of like street hockey, to, to, to practice ice hockey, but you're not paying the high cost of ice time, but you can rent it out. And they have done some figures as far as being able to rent it out and how much money it would generate, and they could probably rent it out pretty much a, a lot at night and on weekends when camp isn't there, even, and then once summer's over with and camp's not there, they would, there's enough groups around here and hockey people that would prefer to do that than to pay the high cost of ice time. And they just can't get it.
Also, once camp is over, then it's multi-generational, because you can have adults out there as well as youth.
Right. And so I, I think fixing that area really becomes a priority for them as a revenue generator.
So, STW sounds like it's really important.
It is.
It is, and we're taking away the, the place that everybody was hoping for up there in lieu of, and do.
And I might correct that the basketball court in Northford is a danger, that you keep closing it down and kids keep reopening it.
Correct, last year we did, yes.
So if we did those two, forget about the fact that we're eliminating something from the Northford Park, but if we fix the basketball court and did Stanley T. Williams, where does that leave us in dollars and cents?
We would, we would, um, I just redid that before I walked in here tonight.
Well, you'd be about.
A hundred and seventy five, so we'd still, we'd have enough funds if we use some of that loose up money. Which, then there'd still be a surplus left over of about forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that, that, that would be my, um, thinking, that, you know, Stanley T. is very important, especially for the recreation program.
And it's an ice store out there, it really is, and it's been closed, I don't know how many, you know, like I said, five that I know of.
It's probably closer to ten or more, yeah.
So, I mean, that, that, that seems to be a priority.
And that's how the commission looked at it, that's why I said the revised edition.
It'd be nice to do everything, but we just don't have the money.
Would you, to do the STW, would that, would you have that ready in time for part of camp?
I would like to say yes, I, I mean, if we've got the numbers now and things, I just need the RFP drawn up and things, so. Um, originally, Franny can answer this better than me, um, they told me roughly with paving, everything'd take about a week, but if they paint them, it's gonna be another week or two, correct?
Well, you gotta, you gotta let them cure once you pave them, usually twenty one days. Let the concrete, you know, the asphalt has to sit there a while and get the, the air, you can't do it by the way.
So if we get going, hopefully, maybe the end of June. Beginning of July, so we'd still have July and part of August for camp.
When does camp start officially?
June twelfth. School's out early this year.
Well, school's out June ninth.
Oh. It's the last day of school. We're, we're starting at the weekend.
Right, Lauren, what was that number again, one seventy five even?
No, one seventy five, three ninety. Because the numbers that you have in front of you are seventy plus, that, that, that's adding another twenty nine, three ninety on it.
Right.
And what's that cover?
That covers the courts at STW and post tension basketball up in Northford. No, just the ba- just the ba-.
Stanley T. Williams basketball.
Correct. And pent- basketball only in Northford.
Rose, do you have a handle on these numbers? To make the motion.
Oh.
Rose, do, I have a.
What, what, Franny, or Kurt, what do you need for a contingency on that?
I think we need to think about it. We're gonna do the asphalt court again, and then we're gonna wait how many years and then we're gonna be doing over again. Think of that.
You're thinking of the asphalt tennis up in Northford?
Yeah, again, we, we just did a beautiful job down here, and it, I know it hasn't all proved itself out, but it's longer lasting than the asphalt. So now, we already did these parts over, and now we're doing them again, and you're gonna do it again. And I don't know that we're doing the real right thing here.
There's so many, there's so many towns out there not doing post tension. There's so many towns out there.
For what reason?
Because they can't afford it.
Oh, I know that, yes, I get.
There's so many towns out there doing asphalt. And if you put a good base under the asphalt, it's gonna last you a long time, that, that, Stanley T.
It didn't last fifteen years.
Did they have a good base under it, did they do it right?
Yeah, they ground it up, I mean, there's some stuff pushing up through, but that's, you know, anything can happen. All I'm saying is, you know, we're spending money, I'd like to spend it and, and end it, but I, I get the basketball court has to be fixed. Again, to be repaired. A lot of money all the way around.
So it is post tension too, and we don't even know what, what post tension is, that's fairly new product.
Yeah, but it's, it's.
Post tension's been around a long time.
Yeah, and it's, it's concrete.
The application of the court has changed.
They don't have post tension for the STW courts.
Lot of towns, I, I, I've looked, lot of towns are going with post tension, I mean, I, I've sort of looked out there. And they're doing it because of longevity. Asphalt, it, it's gonna crack, you have to, you have to patch it and take care of it.
Can we get numbers on the post tension?
For Northford?
No, for Stanley T.
They got him.
For Northford, it's two oh three, but that's basketball and tennis.
Correct.
For Northford.
I'm just throwing it out there.
No, we're on Stanley T. here.
I was gonna say, size wise, is, are the two of those about what Northford, North, STW is?
Four, four square?
Yeah.
So you double the, the tennis from, uh.
So they probably have the money there, so you gotta do what you gotta do. I mean, it just, just throwing it out there, make good decisions. And I, and it's a financial thing, I get it, but.
It's either not do it.
No, we gotta do it, we gotta do something.
Or, or do it.
I'm just throwing it out there to think about it, wait, but that's all, just to, just to, we're gonna do it, are, are we gonna coat them in, in three or four years from now?
Probably. There's no question there's an aspect of kicking the can down the road, but the reality is, we're really out of cans.
Yeah, well, I, I, I get it, I'm just throwing it out there.
But with the asphalt courts, there is, there is more long-term maintenance, I mean, because you're, you're gonna get cracks, and you have to seal them. And then there's newer technologies to seal the cracks and that lasts longer, but you have to stay on, I mean, that, that's, that's the one thing we gotta be aware of. If we're, if we're building them, we can't let them go for a long time and defer maintenance.
And we just gotta, we just gotta make sure they're built right, with enough stone, with enough drainage under them.
Right, but you're not gonna, you're not gonna get the pavement for that number if it's built right.
Pardon me?
You're not gonna get it paved for that number. And have under drains and everything done. And have under drains and everything done right.
The seventy thousand?
Where the beauty of the, the beauty of the post tension concrete is, it can float over top of the North Bramford and Northford soils. You know, first of all, you have no place to go with the drains, you know, you're not gonna, you're not gonna build it right. I would rather see it sit there and, you know, not put seventy thousand into asphalt as a Band-Aid. You know, and it might, you wouldn't get ten years, you know, we never have without cracks on asphalt.
Those numbers were from Premier and Atwater, they both came in sixty-nine change.
Right, but they're gonna just take up the asphalt that's there and pave it.
We had asked to go down three inches, I believe.
Oh, you, you have to grind, grind.
Yeah, but see, to do it right, 'cause when I build tennis courts for wealthy people, we have a three-foot base, and you know what? I have a, I have one in Hampden that's been in there for thirty years, and there's not a crack in it, but that's not what you did, going down three inches? We need to go down two feet, where if you did the concrete, you're gonna be okay.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing, Stanley T., I'm, I'm just trying to think, we, we put the word in, so we're, the soil there, that was the one place that soils were pretty good in terms of the same, had better drainage underneath them. Most of them were Bramford.
It's pretty bad.
Right.
Pretty wet.
Yeah, absolutely, and especially where Memorial Field and, and the IS, that was built on this one.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, do you think that the asphalt is?
Well, I, if it's long-term, the post tension concrete, it's, the way people go on it, it's, it's a long-term solution, they don't crack, I mean, it's, it's, it, it's built, and it's built as a structure on top of the base. Asphalt, again, asphalt needs maintenance, regular routine maintenance, you're gonna get cracked, but it's, you know, it's a cost difference, you know that about it.
But, the, the reason we're, we're saying that is we're looking at the summer program, you know?
Right.
You should keep a court shut down at the summer program, you know, you're not doing the kids any favors, you know?
Right.
So, I mean.
No, I, I agree, I'm just.
If we're holding off on the pretense we're going to have the money next year, so the kids will lose another year, and next year, if anything, it's gonna be worse.
Yeah.
So the reality is, you may not even have this much money next year. Frankly think you ought to take with you yet.
I drive by the Northford Courts every night, you know, and there's not a lot of activity up there.
There is in the basketball court.
Yeah, sometimes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I believe basketball gets used by, but not as much as the tennis.
And, and that was part of the thinking of the commission the other night, talking is to hold off on the tennis courts at Northford Park, just because they really don't see the, see, they wanna see once how much they really get used there.
They probably do need to patch them. I was gonna say, they probably need patching. Yeah, they probably need patch.
There's a picture of that.
I didn't do, I, that's basketball, I haven't.
We just, we just got a picture of the basketball court that was bad, really bad. So. But you would put a tennis court at STW? Or for pickleball?
A, a combination tennis, pickleball, just like down at Memorial. On one of the ends, only the other three open.
Right, okay. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to allocate a hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, um, for the STW asphalt courts, fencing, and post tension basketball at Northford Court. It, yes, at Northford Courts.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Just, i- is that built in with any contingencies, or is that just a?
That's, that's what I asked, if there was a contingency in there.
Well, the, the.
I would, I mean, I think the funding.
Well, the money, yeah, where this is coming from is that there was some capital funding to park and rec, there's twenty, fifteen thousand from fourteen-fifteen, there's eighty-five hundred from fourteen-fifteen, and there's twenty-five thousand from fifteen-sixteen, and then they are taking ninety-five thousand from their two-two-six account, which is their account that they use in park and rec for their fees, it's their accounting, in and out, their balance account. So they're taking ninety-five thousand from their account. So that puts it at a hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred, and then there's Losip money in our two thousand seventeen-eighteen budget capital of seventy-six thousand, so it gives them a total available funds of two hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred. And so based on the quotes that they got for the, the work, that came out to the one-seventy-five, three-ninety. So they're.
Gives about forty thousand.
It's forty-four thousand that's left in the account from the transfer of that money and from their two-two-six account. That could be used towards this project.
And we have a motion, second?
I second it.
Okay, Joe seconded it. Any further discussion? Roll call? Yes?
Yes.
Counselor Angloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelaora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Mina? Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
I think it's a mistake, but yes.
Mr. Mayor, two of those projects that you see in the list of the funding, the shade canopy for fifteen thousand and the outdoor place gate for twenty-five thousand are previously approved Losip projects. I would need a formal motion if you could, I can give you the project number.
I'm making a motion to close out that project, prescription for that amount, I can formally, I might sign them.
So we, we don't have to transfer, we're just closing?
We're gonna close them out, and then we'll reassign it to a new project that you're making tonight.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to close out Losip project number zero-nine-nine dash fifteen dash oh-thirty, the STW Community Center Shade Canopy Pavilion for fifteen thousand, and Losip project number oh-nine-nine dash sixteen dash oh-one-oh, the STW Community Center Outdoor Place Gate for twenty-five thousand.
Second. Seventy-seven?
Yeah, Joe.
Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Foran?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelaora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Mina?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
All right, next item is discussion on Beer Garden at the Potato and Corn Festival.
Yeah, the, uh, uh, that should be tabled for, they're not ready for.
Next item is discussion of Potato and Corn Festival Coordinator.
Yeah, so you know, uh, I, I think, I think it was Counselor Arman had requested that we, we discuss it, I'm, you know, if you, if you're up to it at this point, uh, but , uh, Roseanne has resigned, uh, the post, and I know it leaves, uh, uh, big shoes to fill for the respect of the, uh, Popo Festival, so, um, you know, the thoughts moving forward that we could jump on that right away, given the fact that it's already May. I'm not sure whether the Rec Commission has weighed in on this, uh, or sent any information, but.
Rec Commission didn't know about it that night of their meeting.
Okay.
The email came after their meeting.
Okay. All right, so I, you know, I, I think, uh, you know, certainly defer to Lauren's input as well, but I, I, I don't know that the council, I would hope, wants to move on this and, 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 and do a search and get ready to.
So do we know how much she's been paid already out of her twenty-two thousand?
Yeah.
And, like, how much is left in the account? First.
Mike's got the, probably the exact numbers, there's about fifteen change left in the account.
Yeah, she's been paid out, uh, seven thousand forty-six dollars, I think is what, uh, right, seven thousand forty-six dollars with a balance of.
Is there anybody, Lauren, that would step into that position that you know? Lauren?
Um, I, helping out, I haven't asked, because I didn't know where it was gonna go after the council meeting tonight. I've been thinking, ideally, I'd like to see if there's somebody that's been involved with the festival, that knows the festival, that'd make it a lot easier than bringing somebody brand-new with, that's never attended the festival or done it. Um, it, as you guys know, it's gonna be an interesting summer, we're gonna be training a new secretary, Sean's first year of camp, and, and, and somebody new for festivals, so, um, do I have anybody in mind to know, would I, would I hope somebody would step up? Yes.
All right. Do we need anything on that?
No, I mean, if they're now, I'll work with Lauren, we'll proceed and, and.
Yeah, but you can't just pick somebody and hand it to them, right? Wouldn't you have to advertise the position, or where this is just kind of a weird position? Can you break all the rules?
No, I, I, it's a sort of contractual relationship, so I, but I'd still like to go through a process, I'm not just gonna hand, you know, handpick somebody, I think, and, and I think ultimately, I want you guys to be part of that process as well, just to, to know and understand.
Well, I'm just wondering, do you need to advertise it, like, just within, or do you need to advertise?
No, 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 uh, uh, external, it's not like a union position or anything like that, so no, we'll, we'll just go external and, and local, and, and try to find somebody, uh, that we, who's knowledgeable, I, I don't think you're gonna find anybody from the outside. I don't know, maybe we deal with some other festival experience potentially, I, I don't know what's out there, I have no idea what the market is for a festival coordinator, but hopefully, um, we'll get lucky and find somebody.
Hopefully, somebody that can stick around for next year.
Yeah. All right, moving on to item F, Lisa Willanti Town Clerk changes to the ballot language.
Right, there's a memo in your packet, should be in your folder, um. I think I gave mine to you, Mike.
They still get a current language, you wanna explain?
Yeah, yeah, the Secretary of State's office has allowed, uh, towns to change the language on the ballot for November with respect to the, obviously, the council election and the Board of Education, uh, to change what is currently in place, uh, vote for any nine council members, or on the Board of Education, vote for any four for the Board of Education. It would allow the towns to change that to a new language that would say, vote for up to nine on the council, vote for up to four on the Board of Education. And talking with Lisa, I guess this is an issue for some individuals going to vote, and thinking that they have to vote for nine people, when in fact, uh, they could vote for one, they could vote for any number up to nine. Uh, so this, I think, is a way, uh, to clarify, um, for voters in the voting booth, what they're to do.
Yeah, I think this is a good change, 'cause I know a lot of people told me they really just wanted to vote for me. They felt they had to vote for nine.
And, and both of them did.
All right, we have a suggested motion.
I'll make the motion, the North Bramford Town Council hereby approves the new language, vote for up to on the ballot as pertains to the election of municipal officers for both the Town Council and the Board of Education.
Second.
Discussion? Now, do you have any more?
Nothing new.
Okay, roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Foran?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelaora?
Yeah.
Very enthusiastic.
Don't be, yeah, right, don't be too enthusiastic.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Mina?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Okay, next item is G, um, this is Ken Delfini, our tax collector, requested the appointment of a new marshal as the older marshal retired.
Yeah, there's also a memo in your packet, uh, concerning the change, or requested change, and, uh, I think Pat has reviewed that as well.
Okay, be hereby resolved that the North Bramford Town Council, based on recommendations of a town attorney, in concurrence with tax collector and treasurer, finance director, authorize a state marshal, Mark Winnick, to serve as a state marshal used to collect delinquent taxes.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Um, I just have a question, um, normally, doesn't a town attorney pick the marshal? Is that who you're referring?
That's the way I, I've always remembered it.
I, I thought normally, the town attorney chose the marshal.
Chose the marshal that we use?
Yeah, this is the, we, we were using one of the, one that, uh, was up on board when I got here, he, Lombardi, he retired, and we need someone new, and, uh.
So this is the guy that you would recommend?
Yeah, he's the.
Okay.
He does, uh, work in Bramford, and also, he's, he's got a, associated with a real old distinguished marshal out there, make on something, so, 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 just, uh, you know, so.
Okay.
He's the guy that actually gets money, you know, he goes and, he repossesses stuff and he has to.
Roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Foran?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelaora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Mina?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
All right, next item is citizen statements and petitions.
Good evening, Clip Potter, Northford, Connecticut. I'd like to make a compliment, a comment, and a question. The compliment is, you know, you've got, I don't wanna say town employees, they're almost miracle workers you got working for you here. I don't think Lauren knows what a full staff is, let alone an experienced full staff. She's almost at the three-strike point. Now, you should give her the power to hire somebody immediately, because the Potato Fest is getting right to a point where carnival season's starting, the whole bit. One comment for her, well, the circus is shutting down, maybe you can find a ringmaster that can handle three rings at once, 'cause that's basically what the coordinator does. It's a thankless job, it's a stressful job, and to come in blind is, I won't say it's not fair, but it's gonna require somebody really looking to get into this, and, and any time delay in hiring this person's gonna really put a strain on the fest. It's not the big things that cause you a headache, it's all the little things. It also might be a new beginning for the Potato Fest, and I'll leave it at that, there's some people on the board, there was some issues. I could overlook them, other people could overlook them, some people have very fragile skins in town, so this way we can maybe get a brand-new set of volunteers, because there aren't enough volunteers, and so this will be a, like a clean sweep, but I think it has to happen in a timely manner, really, 'cause it's down to crunch time. I mean, carnival season's starting already, you know, it starts at the Catholic churches and it gets right in, and we, we're not that far away. And if you lose that forward motion that Roseanne's developed, you, you're, you're opening yourself up for some issues. Uh, the other thing is, uh, well, the compliment was for the town employees, the comment is, you're, you're doing everything you could possibly do to keep the town somewhat floating, I understand that, but our kids are our future, and if they don't have basketball courts to play on, like, like you go by Northford, it's lit up pretty much every night. The kids are just out there trying to burn off a little extra energy, or they could be on the ATVs tearing up all our fields. I'd rather see them on the court than tearing up the fields, because obviously, that program with the water company and our police department hasn't worked. If you go to a ballgame over, uh, near the police department, you gotta watch out going to your cars, you don't get run over by one of the ATVs, which travels right across Route twenty-two, down the Potato Fest hill, over into the field, and tears it up. There's been no improvement. Maintenance is another big thing you overlook a lot, and I think it's a money thing. But if you don't put some pennies into things, now we're looking at lots of big dollars. Some of our billings, the gutters have got flowers growing out of them, two stories up. Pretty, but not effective. You know, there's just stuff that wouldn't take maybe ten, fifteen, twenty minutes to take care of. We never seem to get to that stage. Then when the gutters come crashing down, then you take care of it. I mean, it's just, there's gotta be more accountability, more small-term maintenance, so it doesn't become big-term maintenance. And you've got Franny working with such a tired fleet, that when they go out to plow, he doesn't know how many of them are gonna get back to the garage on their own. So again, yes, do you look to the future? You try. But the future, if you don't look to it, it becomes your present time factor, and now you're looking at some substantial bills. So I guess, you know, I'm, I'm just hoping someday, there will be enough money, but we know better, because our, our state budget is, we don't even use the M-word anymore. We use B, big B, billions of dollars, and more billions of dollars. So, yeah, the state's not gonna do a darn thing for us, we're gonna have to generate our resources from within our town. You guys do an awesome job. You, you really, you're dollar stretchers. But your dollar stretchers are sitting here in front of you, too. And, I mean, it's just, they, they have to operate on the edge. It's become the norm, and it's wearing them out. You can't keep working like this, 'cause when they leave, guess what? People are gonna say, well, how did this get done? I don't think any of them works a forty-hour week, it's more. I mean, you'll get the robo-calls from some guy named Anthony that's telling you, your kindergarten kids are gonna be, you know, they give back so much. So, again, you will find out, when they finally do retire, what they did, and you're gonna be hard-pressed to replace them. So, thank you.
Kurt, there's a, Cliff, there's a mandate. They can't retire without giving us two years' notice. So we don't have to run for reelection before they go.
Well, okay, I agree, I mean, we, we, we have to recognize it more, I mean, uh, I, I think we see more Anthony than his family does, between his fire department duties, his extra little things he does, plus his, his own job. I mean, it, it's, it's appreciated, but it, what, when does he finally get a chance to just say, ah, you know? And if you're talking to Franny for, for more than five minutes, he's answered three phone calls while he's trying to answer your question. That's where the supervisor would've come in, so he could do some long-term plans. But, again, that was kind of mismanaged. Thank you.
I just have one question that I forgot to bring up under Park and Rec. That, they talked about the Poco Fest from last year, and they haven't gotten an accounting from it.
Right, right.
Where, where are we with that?
I will, I will go out, I will have it for your next meeting. Well, the thought was to give it to the Rec Commission first.
Well, they should get it first.
Right, so.
I mean, that's, and that's fine.
Unless you're when their next meeting is.
They're at the end of, twenty-third of this month? Yeah.
I will, they will have it, and you'll have it in the first meeting in June.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have one word for comment. There was this commission committee or something, the Board of Ed and Town Council Communications Subcommittee. Have they communicated at all this year?
Yes, we, we met before budget.
Okay, because it was formed so that there would be, it would take the rough edges off both departments, both Town Council and Board of Ed, and try to avoid big problems and keep them small, so you're all on the same page. I didn't know you had met, because every time you go down the list, no meeting, no meeting, no meeting.
They, well, because they prefer to meet only maybe four.
Okay, so you don't have a specific.
Like a quarterly meeting type of thing.
Okay.
And so we met four in March, when we did our budget workshops.
So you only meet as needed?
Correct.
You're not on a special count?
Correct.
Okay, makes good sense, thank you.
Mike, to address the, the Potato Court Festival Coordinator, you could fast-track that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Seeing that, we'll move into executive session.
Could I, could I, yeah, could I suggest that you also amend the agenda to include a second, um, session, executive session with, to include Fran, a role of Public Works for discussion of personnel matters?
I, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add to executive session personnel issue, personnel discussion for Public Works.
Second.
Moving to executive session, or, roll call. Any other, anything else, right, roll call?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Harmon?
Yes.
Council Candelaure?
Yep.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Anna?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Or Council Rose?
Yes.